Okay, everybody, if you've seen it, we want to get this meeting started. So we have quite a full agenda, but not as full as the last meeting for those who are here and for those who stayed to the end. Bless you. It was a late one. We're going to try to move this along once again. Just a couple of things, housekeeping items. First of all, I wanted to congratulate all those members who were elected. The board is going to turn over a few members come the next meeting, and we will elect once again officers, chair, and so on and so forth, so you can come to the next meeting for those exciting events. I also wanted to, we have one full board member who's going to be leaving, that is Greg Rich, and I wanted to commend him for his exemplary service on the commission. He carried out a town. And as a side point, and I mean this sincerely, and not as a joke, he has great taste in bourbon.
Yes.
So, again, you know, I say this about all members of the board, this is a voluntary position. There are some late nights, and it's not always easy, and he did it really well. So with that, we will get started with the agenda. Okay, one, I'm sorry, one other thing as well. This time, we have two mics. Last time, we had one, and it was really clumsy passing it all around. We apologize about that. Hopefully, this will run a little bit more smoothly, but we still are going to have to pass this one around as a commission, so you'll have to bear with us with that. Same rules apply as before for those who are speaking. From the public, we would like you to limit your comments to three minutes, so that other people can speak. Remember, to those who have spoken, we had quite a few people speak last time. Those points are in the public record. You don't need to reiterate them. You could say you agree with certain people. That is fine, but just understand, we have already heard those points. I want to keep this meeting moving along. So, and then at some point, just to keep the meeting moving along, I will say there will be five more people to speak, and you'll just have to bear with us with that. So, again, also, when you speak, address the commission, not the applicant, and not the audience. So, again, live round rules, but it will run smoothly, I promise. And with that, we'll start with our first application here.
Application 25.2, One High Sealer Builders LLC, for a site development plan located at 128 to 130 Mount Pleasant Road and 1 Holly Hill Road for the construction of a 67-unit rental development community with 21 units set aside in compliance with Connecticut general statutes 830G. It's demonstrated on a set of plans titled Calmenti Apartments, proposed site development 128, 130, Mount Pleasant Road, in town, Connecticut, dated November 15th, 2024, and all supporting documents submitted to the land use agency dated August 14th, 2025, revised October 31st, 2025.
So, again, I will ask the applicant to address us with any new information, and then I will open it up to the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Tom Staff, ladies and gentlemen, Attorney Tim Hollister representing the applicant. Now, if I make this distance from the mic, is that, can everyone hear me? Sorry, now I can't see my notes, but we'll give it a try. I will be as brief as we can. We have some comments intended to put most of the issues to ban. I say most, and I'll come back to that. But we did file on October 30th, Thursday last week, written responses to comments and questions from the October 16 hearing. So the commission should have a copy of that, and I'll refer to those responses as I go through tonight. Yesterday, we filed a written response to the design advisory board letter that we received, and I believe it was on Monday this week. That meeting was held October 29th, so I've given you a copy of our response under, and one rendering, I believe. Mr. Chairman, you have the copies in front of you, and our designer, Mr. Allen, will walk me through that. With me tonight are our Art Salad and Alton Salad from Solid Builders, Kermit Dore, our traffic engineer, Joe Allen, who's speaking at the moment for our Arch Design Services, and our Jill Verstieck, our consult code and safety consultant, Mike Mizuko, our professional engineer, not able to attend. He has another hearing in another town, but I think I can say that all of the items on his plate have been addressed, as I will also explain in my remarks. Now, so let me, in the nature of trying to button up a bunch of issues, if they recall, the town, Mr. Mizuko, go over this, comments about the drainage plant that happened September. Mr. Mizuko redid the calculation, submitted that, that was on October 15th, before the next meeting. We didn't have a response from Mr. Curtis at that time. We now receive that, and just to bring you over the last 48 hours, Mr. Mizuko spoke to Mr. Curtis yesterday, and they had an exchange of emails, and I believe Mr. Sibley has given you copies of the exchange on technical matters between Mr. Curtis and Mr. Mizuko, and I can, I can read it into the record there, sort of engineering detail, but I will say that Mr. Mizuko has responded to the nature of the calculation tests and infiltration tests, and I believe that issue was put to rest, so I'll just maybe add that. The next matter is the reconfiguration of the bottom of the driveway, called the direction we got from the Department of Transportation, direct turn only. So Mr. Mizuko has added signage shown on the revised plans at the bottom of the driveway. Now, we considered, if you recall this commentary from October 16, we considered designing a so-called mountable island at the bottom of it, be directional and also intended to, I guess, as a sort of a traffic economy measure. But since this is going to DOT on the encroachment permit, and they're going to have a final say, what we're going to do is tell them, we're willing to put in a mountable island at the bottom, and let them make the decision, because basically anything we do or you do here, subject to their decision anyway. So, I'm just putting it on the record, we will offer them a so-called mountable island, which is a raised island with curves that tires can go over, and just let them make the decision, which they're going to do anyway. Next matter is, we had a memo from Health Director, Health Department, Director Culbert, and she asked for confirmation that there will be a generator provided, and that will be provided on-site. Regarding Hillcrest Drive, we've given you in the supplemental materials, details on the proposed signage, to make sure there is no cut-through from using Hillcrest Drive from Route 6 to Cover Bridge Road, or vice versa. So basically, we proposed four locations, that basically say, private property, no trespassing, no access to Route 6, or to Cover Bridge Road, or Hillcrest. I do want, it is important to point out that we will be working, we have to work with the town's traffic authority, and the police department. As to the exact text of the signage, the number and replacement, we will do that, but we have suggested pretty much what we should say. Mr. Mizuko has also shown on the revised plan, a row of providing trees that will have been added to the landscaping plan, to provide a visual screen to the houses on the north of the property that are on Hillcrest, just adjacent to our property, and that'll, in short order, grow into an open screen that should be acceptable. We had a memo from the fire marshal, asking for confirmation of hydro locations. Certainly, we are committed to doing that, and accepting his direction. Now, with regard to the design advisory report, for, I was not at the meeting, my clients and Mr. Allen were there. I believe there was good meeting on the 29th, and I'll just summarize to Mr. Allen, talking through the rendering that we distributed. We got back to a very extensive comment letter. It was not all complimentary, that's okay, but our written response basically should be understood as follows. Mike, remember, this is a voluntary submission, and we're not in the Hollyville Design District, but we have taken the comments to heart. So what we are, what my client is working on is the landscaping, trees in front of the retaining wall, and plantings along Route 25, retaining wall color, the roof pitch, the facade materials. I've told him that there will not be condensers at grade level. We agreed to put a fence at the top of the retaining wall, and it should not be a chain link fence, which is an AS4, which we confirmed. And what we were not able to do, or I should say, politely declined, was to start over again and convert the overall development to a, what they asked for, which were smaller, building style buildings, and there was also a suggestion of elimination of sidewalks. And we were not able to do the first one, and we don't think the second one is the right way to approach pedestrian safety. So I want to have Mr. Allen just come up and say a few words about the rendering that I distributed.
Good afternoon. Joe Allen, Art, sorry. Joe Allen, Architectural Design Services. So we did have a meeting with the Architectural Review Board, and they had very positive, constructive comments, and we took them to heart. We listened to what they wanted.
Do you speak for the mic, please?
I'm so sorry. The biggest thing they pointed out was the height of the building. They wanted to create an illusion of pulling it down. So we did this by adding the straight-up mansards that we had. We put, you see, the peaks are still like they were. We did a hip roof and a mansard style, and it isn't the illusion of bringing that roof line down. That was the big thing that they had. The other thing they wanted was mixed colors, and tried to make it look like separate, individual buildings. And we did that two ways. We did three primary colors, as you can see in this illustration. And then we have three different textures. White represents a boarding baton, vertical siding. The brown there is a horizontal, typical clapboard siding. And there's another color there, that gray is pewter color. That's smooth panels. So that is giving the illusion that there's multiple buildings, and instead of just one running freight train block at the building. The other issue they had, they did not like the idea of a chain fence. So we went and we changed. You can kind of see in the illustration, black aluminum fence on top of the wall, you can see it there, with just individual pickets. I think that was great. It cleaned it up, looks nice. The high color. Oh, they wanted some more screening of the plantings, and you can see in this illustration, we put more plantings across the front. I think it does a pretty good job of kind of camouflaging it a little bit. And overall, that was really three or four points that they had, that we tried to change, as you can see in this illustration. We tried to please them, and make the building appear a little smaller, and individual buildings. And that's pretty much what we just did.
Thank you.
All right.
So just to clarify, what we just showed you is not going back to the design advisory, because they had a meeting just last week, and we just literally finished a rendering a couple hours ago, and the letter. So, but I will state on the record our determination to go back to them and show them what we've done, and get their buy-in on an advisory and voluntary basis. Two other items I need to address and clarify, one is pedestrian safety on Hillcrest. The, at three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address this, as the people who spoke on this issue at the last two meetings. And first, I hope everyone understands that the applicant is committed to safety in the area. We have resident, intended residents who will use that street, and vice versa, and we don't want to create an unsafe situation. Our professional traffic engineer, Mr. Rua, has concluded that the additional vehicle trips on Hillcrest will be minimal in traffic volume terms, and so minimal that particularly, there will be no change that will be noticeable. Again, we're talking about two cars, or a car every 20 minutes, and the hour, and less than that for the rest of the day. Also understand, please, that the applicant is committed to making sure there is no cut-through from between Route 6 and Cover Bridge Road, because that would affect the residents here as much as anyone who lives on Cover Bridge or Hillcrest. So we're committed to making sure that does not happen. Last thing to recognize is that Hillcrest is an existing public street that connects to the subject property, and so we have a right to make use of it, and making use of it also provides a second emergency access, so it's a benefit. Last issue, and full confession, this is an issue that came up about four hours ago, and it's going to prevent, I think, prevent us from totally closing the hearing. And it's a little bit complicated, but I'm going to try to just explain the issue, and then ask that we continue this hearing to the 4th of December to resolve this. Here's the issue. We have, we have in the original application, a will serve letter from Aquarian from July 15th, in which they said, we agree to serve you, but we currently have a warrant wearing on connections because of the flood damage in 2024. We then, originally understood that Aquarian had restored all the connections, because they were servicing both the towns, the towns need, the towns of urgency need, and connections that have already been approved by this commission. And then there arose some question about whether this commission can approve any development where there is still not approved. In other words, Aquarian was asking us to get your approval before they would reissue the will serve letter, and so Mr. Sibley and I discussed sort of a chicken and egg question. I don't want to ask the commission to close the hearing and vote on the issue until we have this completely straightened out. I think there was some confusion in the communications with Aquarian about the difference between a will serve letter and an actual permission to make an actual physical connection, which was obviously not what we're asking for at this stage. But we will straighten it out, and we'll straighten it out in advance in our next meeting. But it just arose today, and I didn't want to, I didn't want you to vote with an unclear situation. So, Mr. Chairman, that is everything I have to present tonight. I'm answering the questions, but our request is, and I'll grant on the record, an extension to December 4. I think everything is fine with that, and we will find out the worst of the issue.
Thank you. So, first of all, one comment is, you know, I appreciate the fact that you submitted a place to the design advisory board. That is not something you have to do at a rate 30G, and you have responded to a lot of the comments, and that is not something you have to do. So I just wanted to, you know, make that clear as well. You know, it's, you know, the nature of these, you do not have to do a lot beyond the health and safety issue. So, you know, that's appreciated. I, you know, I do have a couple of questions, but I wanted to first ask other members of the board for any comments or questions to the applicant, before we open it up to the public. Anyone have a question? All right, so I'll ask mine. You know, the one thing I'm curious about is, in terms of the traffic volume on Hillcrest, you know, most specifically, understanding, you know, the, in the opinion maybe of the traffic engineer, or a bunch of you, or civil engineers, whether you think the road was designed for the traffic volume, and how the road can handle extra traffic volume, however minimal pointed out by the traffic engineer. So if there are any comments on that, that would be great.
Well, Director Kermit, our traffic engineer. Yes, Steve, I just gave you a ballpark picture. When we looked at two PBR volumes, what we made, you know, currently about a can or a dozen houses, we're looking at about 20 plus minus trips per PBR. We are adding about, on the order of magnitude, about that 20 plus minus 30 PBR. So total is about, say, 40 to 50 vehicles, trips, total in and out, using this road. I stand by my professional opinion, as far as the capacity of this road, it's a two-way road, two-lane road, approximately, you know, 20 foot in width, adequate for average passenger cars, right? We are talking about maximum capacity of this two-lane road, of about 1,200 vehicles per hour. When you compare both vehicles, capacity, in other words, the vast of it, you will. And 40 to 50 vehicles that will actually use this road. So it just represents a very small percentage of the capacity this road can handle. So I don't see any reason, as a result of adding, doubling, if you will, of the existing volumes, will create an unsafe situation. You know, this kind of road is not unusual in new town, or even in suburban towns. I mean, you know, if you go to some eastern part of towns in Connecticut, we have 16 feet, 16-foot wide two-way road. I mean, this is not, this is not, obviously, Boston Post road, but it's adequate for, serves its purpose, and will safely serve its purpose. That's all I have. Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much for your comments. I appreciate them. The road is actually 19 feet wide, I believe, based on your calculation. Last time we spoke, is that correct?
Yep, just to be clear.
It's not 20.
I did not go out to measure it, use the wheel. I used the air wheel.
I think in the last presentation, you pointed that it was under what the average road was. I drove there today and encountered an Amazon truck when I was going, which I had to pull it over off to the side of the road to be able to allow the truck to pass by. I find it hard to imagine. Like, the calculations you're giving are based on those that are, the impact that the apartment building will bring, but, and signage, as we know, doesn't necessarily change people's habits or reactions, because if they have very heavy traffic flow at that intersection, and it would be very easy for people to enter into Hillcrest and pass through, and take the right out on the other side. I don't see how we stop that and decrease. And that road is in poor condition to start with. There's many potholes in the road, and it has, it's steep, has a hard angle on it when you get halfway up the road, and then levels off to get into this complex. I just think it's really complicated. I can't imagine how the traffic would not be a huge issue, because like, once it opens up, what's to stop anyone from going through? A sign? I mean, we have those all under town where people don't follow the rules. So, none of my thoughts.
Do you want my response?
Yes.
Well, two points. I mean, this is Tommy in the road. I mean, obviously, the applicant wants to make it work for everyone, but I don't think, it is his responsibility, like anyone else, other than a Tom on Newtown, to maintain and improve the road. I think that's just unfair comment, to say that poor condition of the road has anything to do with the applicant or the application itself. The second point is, you are talking about cut-through traffic. You know, the applicant has done the reasonable measures to address this issue, obviously. Let's see, who's going to use these cut-throughs? Let's say, everyone wants to use this cut-through. The first thing is, it's not that a convenient cut-through. How much time will you save by going through the side to go to Cover Bridge Road? I doubt it. I think it's much easier to just go through the signal and make a left turn, as opposed to climb to the side and go to Cover Bridge Road. Second is, how many, how many people are actually living in the apartment complex and in the neighborhood of this portal? Now, I respond to the chairman's question. I stand my opinion. The existing and future volume will represent a tiny, tiny percentage of capacity of the roadway. Even you include all those people who live in the apartment buildings in the back, or even people going to the church on Sunday, these are not significant volumes that's going to create traffic congestion on these roads, because the existing volumes are extremely low, the future volume for them from the apartment are extremely low, even if you add in cut-through traffic, that will not, definitely, it is my professional opinion, will not create a congestion or safety issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additionally, though, if the exit for the development is over a right-hand turn, people are going to go out, out the back, so they, if they want to come into Newtown, right? They're going to go out the back, go to the traffic light, right? Because you take the right turn, you know, you're going to have to go make a U-turn someplace to go into town.
Yeah, correct.
Right? So that's going to generate more, in my opinion, more traffic going out the back.
That's already covered in the study. We covered it from the beginning.
Well, and additionally, additionally, it's the gas station convenience store is going to go in there, and that's going to generate more traffic.
Just.
Already. So, so go to that intersection and spend 20 minutes, right? It's crazy, it's crazy. Anytime that you get.
I want to remind the commission that configuration of the gas station, obviously, has nothing with this applicant. The way it works.
Well, but, but the combination of the apartment complex and the gas station convenience store, it's going to, it's going to add a lot more traffic.
Well, that's an application approved by the commission years ago.
Yes, but this application, right, it's going to just add, add to more, more just traffic.
Commissioner, if you will, you can pull up those two reports, put it side by side, compare the net contribution of all trips from these 67 apartments versus net contribution of those apartment buildings, of that church, of that gas station. We are a small part, if you compare all trips with the other trips, would that, that side that approved by this commission, all contribution, obviously, would add contributions, but only a small part. The second point I want to make, if you look at the site plan of the gas stations, you can only enter the gas stations from Cover Bridge Road. You cannot, it's a one-way road, right?
Well, generating more traffic for people going from Hillcrest to Cover Bridge to the accident property.
Again, the gas station was covering a traffic report from day one. That is unused, Commissioner. The commission has this report. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioners, if I could just address that stall before. I suppose we can agree that Hillcrest is not a perfect road. You could use some improvement, but it is an existing condition. And the point is, this applicant is not intending to make it worse with the small volume of additional trips that our traffic engineers have described. No one has a greater interest in making sure that there are no cut-throughs than my clients, as the developers and owners of this property. And we don't want to cut through, and we will make sure that it is enforced, and we are highly motivated to do that. Last thing is, it's a standard rule of land use in Connecticut and elsewhere, there is a presumption, even though we can say, well, people never, never follow traffic safety signage, fire leas and stuff. But there's, we have to go in the land use business with a presumption that people will, or else, we just assume violations, laws and rights, and we never did anything. So I would just ask you to keep those principles in mind. we just assume violations, laws and rights, and we never did anything, so I would just ask you to keep those principles in mind.
I'd like to just go back to sidewalks just for a minute to be sure that you'll clarify to where we stand at this point. As I understand it, um, you've agreed in the, I guess, the October thirtieth letter that if we required, you will put a sidewalk on the east side of the complex, which will run parallel with twenty-five.
Which would require a D O T approval, which would be in the state regulations, would you, yes?
Just that you're willing to put it in, you can hit it fast to state.
That's correct.
Okay. You've also, I believe that the drawings, which I have trouble reading, okay? They're pretty confused, uh, and I couldn't get the big drawings. Uh, as you've agreed, you've got a sidewalk along Route Six down to the intersection.
That's on the line.
It's on the plane. Now, then, the only other sidewalk that I'm concerned about, and I don't believe you committed to, is a sidewalk that goes from the upper park, uh, upper parking lot down the hill uh so that people can get down to Route Six and then to get to the trails from that section down there. Is that correct? You've not committed to that sidewalk yet.
Correct.
Okay, but you are, are you willing to put that sidewalk in if one was requested?
I think there's a gradation here.
Well, you know, the sidewalk is not gonna be any steeper than the road there. And you know, it can be steps, there's other things that you can do in the sidewalk.
Pedestrian access, I believe, you, you don't want people walking up a steep grade. Driving up a steep grade is a danger.
But it's not that steep. It's like only twelve percent, I think, for your calculation.
Okay, well, I, I think we looked at that internally and decided that was not something we wanted to introduce on the next.
Okay, is it something you're willing to do if the commission asks you to do it?
I suppose if you order us to do it, we'll have to take that under consideration, but I, we don't wanna volunteer because we don't think it's a good idea from a safety standpoint.
Okay, because as a commissioner, I would like to certainly, like to see you consider that and see if there is some way you can do that so that people from the complex can get down and can, can use the trails and, uh, and other things there.
My client wrote that it's not a safety issue, we will be happy to do that.
Okay, thanks very much.
Anybody else? Um, okay, uh, before I open for a public comment, I was remiss. Uh, we needed to seek the commissioner for any sort of voting today. So Peter, because Greg is not here, Peter is going to be voting on matters today as an ultimate. Uh, so now, uh, again, I'd like to invite members of the public who wanna get up and speak. Uh, I asked you to keep your comments to three minutes. Uh, and again, uh, when you get up to speak, know that if you don't get a chance to speak today, the intention is that we will be continuing, uh, the public meeting. Uh, as such, uh, you know, there'll be other chances to come. So, uh, again, uh, when you come up, uh, state your name and address. There is a slide sheet, uh, over there. So, uh, with that, I will hand it over.
Uh, Janet Kewen, ten Hillcrest Drive. Um, I just wanted, before it skips my mind, to speak about the road signage, about putting on signs, can't get out, no, no clear road. We already have one of those, and I can tell you, yes, people are supposed to pay attention to signs. They don't. And this morning, we had a transfer of low and twenty-five was closed between Covered Bridge and the light. And when I say there was a traffic jam, I, I've never seen so many cars, my neighbor will tell you the same thing, trying to pull in and out, doing key turns, limiting the road, going all the way up to the top of Hillcrest because they thought they could maybe get through because they're not reading that it is not a through road. It was, I mean, it was, you know, much of it. So I realize a lot of concerns for health and safety, and if there's added traffic, I mean, more cars to me just stands to reason it's a safety issue. There can possibly be more increases in accidents. Um, there are only six houses on Hillcrest, not ten or a dozen. I'm lucky of icing maybe ten cars a day on that road, literally. Um, and yes, this is only nineteen feet wide, and I believe the state recommends twenty-two. And the Amazon van, you saw, it's more than talking eighteen biler, it's one of their vans, it's not a gigantic truck. And it is difficult for two cars, vehicles to pass each other. Um, I also think when the restaurant was there, people coming out of that restaurant making that left-hand turn. The traffic expert at any event last week or in one of the meetings, he felt like the restaurant generated more traffic than the apartments will generate. Well, then why can't there still be a left-hand turn? I mean, something's gonna go there on that media, I realize that through development. I'm just saying it's not a good way to have Hillcrest open up to, to go up there. It's not safe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you're signed in.
Hi, Pramodat, one Hillcrest Drive. I'm a little bit confused. There's six houses on Hillcrest Drive and there's sixty-seven apartments going in. Doesn't that increase traffic that times? So the other thing too is, I don't understand the need. We have over two hundred apartments already there. Maybe this is a health issue, but he's declaring bankruptcy and the last building's not even built. It's a health issue that's never gonna be finished. So yeah, I think there is some problems with this whole thing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Braden Wilson, twelve Hillcrest Drive. Um, I just wanted to feedback on that. Um, we, our neighbors had trees taken down and they had to bring in a, um, a big crane and stuff to get the tree down. And they had, want to tell us that they were going to do it because otherwise we'd not be able to get past, to get out. So anytime anybody has any kind of, uh, construction or trees taken down or, um, our neighbor had solar panels put in and we couldn't get past to go anywhere, um, or the top of the hill. So we can't, there's no way out for us. Thank you.
Hi, Deborah Heaton, twelve Hillcrest Drive. One of my questions is, is there gonna be blasting next to us too, make a stop? Okay, because I can feel it as they're building a gas station down the street. My entire house shook. And you can ask my neighbors, they all asked me about the house shaking with the blasting. I already have a crack in my, um, in my chimney, so I'm afraid I'll be further damaged, you know, if something happens. And my other thing is moving vans. All these people are gonna move in and want their furniture to come with them. If you get a semi, which I get them all the time on my road, I talked to the highway department several times, what can I do for signage to not be up there? They backed into my wall, they dug up my road, they dug up my grass, they broke the, um, the curb in front of my house. And if you get a semi on the road, how am I gonna get down and get off the road? It just takes up the whole road. So I'm just gonna turn about big vehicles. And we had a man's pickup truck come up there. They got up there, they got stuck, they had it unhooked. The trailer's on the back, trailer around the truck, they had a hand get the trailer, turn it around, pull it back on the truck down the street. So, and I'm right in the corner there, so everything happens.
Thank you.
Michael, I'm going to party, uh, with Will Hill Road. I know, uh, you know, right near there, but I'm speaking on behalf of the people. Um, my assessment is exactly about moving vans and Amazon vans for delivery, people moving in and moving out. And my concern is the applicant, why didn't you ever consider absorbing the cost of widening the intersection? Why didn't you dump it on state and do it with the local county's taxes? So, you know, that's my question.
You, sign it please, yes. Uh, any other comments? If not, uh, we can continue the public hearing.
Joshery Forsell, Hill Road. Echo everything, obviously, everyone said about Hillcrest. I commend you, uh, pressure women for going out there and driving it. I did the same, and it is, I can't imagine trying to pass any of those on that road. One issue that might have been brought up during the first meeting briefly is the intersection of twenty-five and six. On the traffic report that was submitted, that is a level of service F, failing. It doesn't get worse than that. Um, if you look at the definition for that, congestion, stop and go traffic, leading to higher accident rates and possible blocking of emergency services. So obviously adding sixty-seven units right in the intersection we're talking about, it doesn't get worse than that. So obviously on every report stated that, but we all know there's different levels of it. All we're doing is adding to that already failing level of the intersection. Thank you.
Nicole Goldley, four Hillcrest Drive. My school blaster, but I thought of something else since then. My garbage van won't even come up the rest of my hill anymore. They go to my house, which is at that first curb, and they back all the way down. They won't even go up to turn around or anything. They're just gonna water. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, uh, at this point, uh, what I would like to do is entertain a motion to continue the, uh, the public hearing. Um, and that would be, uh, at the council chambers, uh, across the street, council chambers at seven o'clock on December fourth, Thursday.
I was hoping so.
Oh, competing, I think you're done at first there, so. All right, all those in favor of continuing the meeting?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, see, yeah, and again, uh, thank you for the responses. Uh, and, uh, and again, I look forward to seeing more. Um, with that, let's get on to the, uh, the next application.
Thank you very much. Application twenty-five point two-two by one eighty-eight to one ninety, Mount Pleasant Road LLC for a text amendment to the zoning regulations of the town of Newtown to create a zoning district to modify the affordable housing language by adding section nine point one to nine point one-two to the text amendment for affordable housing in development in greater density as demonstrated by supporting documents submitted to the Land Use Agency dated August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Application twenty-five point two-three by one eighty-eight to one ninety, Mount Pleasant Road LLC for a zone change for a property located at one eighty-eight to one ninety, Mount Pleasant Road. So as to rezone the property from a D E P O to the proposed Mount Pleasant Development District is demonstrated on a set of plans titled one eighty-eight and one ninety, Mount Pleasant Road, Newtown, Connecticut, dated oh five oh one, twenty-twenty-five, and also three documents submitted to the Land Use Agency dated received August twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you, Barb. Um, and, uh, you know, from what I understand, I'll hand it over to the, uh, the applicant. Uh, there was some new information recently submitted. I assume you're gonna brief us on that this time?
For the record, I'm Mr. Stephen Bellis, and I represent the applicant. Uh, no, what I had submitted was material that I'm gonna use it for my rebuttal. Um, so if the public is done with their comments, then I would go through these exhibits with the commission uh, as their rebuttal exhibits.
Got it.
I, I, I think that the public spoke, but there might, there may have been one or two people I remember had trouble with, um, computers. I'm trying to be fair to the public.
Uh, I appreciate that. Um, we'll open it up to the public. You wanna go through your rebuttal? Do you wanna wait to go through that, uh, to have the members of the public speak?
Yeah, I mean, they'd already spoken, but there were a few people that didn't get the opportunity, so I'd like to give that the opportunity, and then I would like to give my rebuttal.
Okay.
If that's, if that's okay. I mean, that's a general order, I think.
Yeah, that order.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, uh, unless there's any questions or comments from the commissioners.
Good evening. Uh, I believe this is something that I.
Don, just let me get into it.
Right into the mic. It's, uh, just right close enough.
Yeah. Can you hear me?
I got you.
All right, anyway, I guess you guys play after time, but, uh, you may not have seen, uh, important to the application, but it has to do with the first mortgage. Um, this property has a first mortgage and.
We can't hear you.
It completely does.
This property has a first mortgage, and I understand mortgagees are generally not part of the application. But in this case, the mortgage requires that the applicant not participate or suffer any change to the uses of the property to be purchased without the mortgagee's written consent. So I'm just.
Yeah, I get the gist of what you're saying, sir.
Yeah, learn to take them, look at the picture and see how things can go bad.
So if I could respond, uh, I think I said in the beginning of my presentation, um, that this is, uh, my client is a contract purchaser of the property. So what that means is that if there's an approval of the zoning, um, then the property would be purchased uh free and clear of that mortgage, it would be paid off, so that ultimately my client would then have the property, um, and the mortgage would be paid off. So there was, there would be no longer any mortgage on the property once the title has passed.
But I understand that, but I'm looking at how it could go badly. What can go bad with, well, the whole situation, let me, uh, let me postulate, so, okay, out of the blue. Everybody's suing everybody for everything you say. If, if the commission approves the application, they're approving of the applicant reaching this contract he was leading to a change in his uses of the property, which is a breach of his mortgage agreement. I, I don't want the commission to now get too deep into the realities. But it may, my second question may, may impact that. If the commission denies this application to amend the regulations, how will that impair your affordability plan?
So what, so we're clear on this particular application may be different than the one you heard before. This application is for a text amendment and a zone change under the eight dash thirty G. Um, and if that is denied, I have the right to do two things. I could modify my plan, uh, which would include the affordability plan, or I could go to court and sue the town or the planning and zoning commission, I should say, because there were no good grounds for denying it under substantial health and safety reasons that were in the record, and then a court would decide. So, um, the only thing I want. So, the only thing I wanted to caution this board with is that this is not the final time you will see this application, because I would have to come back, it says it in the text amendment, after I go to the wetlands commission, I would have to come back with what we call a final site plan, and you get to evaluate that final site plan under the same standard that you would on the 830G application. So, all we're talking about here tonight is approval for a text amendment and zone change with conceptual site plans, and then I would come back.
Let me try to read a little bit more clearly.
Okay.
As far as I read the application and the regulations, you can do this project under 830G just without the text amendment.
Yeah, I agree. So, I, so let me, let me get, I'll, let me read you the Supreme Court case of 131 B. Drew. And I'm not going to read the whole case, I'm just going to highlight it. Exhibit 8. Oh, we don't have internet? Well, I'll explain it to you. I'll put it above the exhibit, the exhibit. So, that case was a 2024 case. Supreme Court said that any person filing an affordable housing application with the commission shall submit as part of his application an affordability plan, which shall, the word "shall" is mandatory, right, in cases, which shall include at least the following, and then they say "he," draft zoning regulations. So, that's something that has to be done. And then they said, obtain a zone change in order to obtain approval of an affordable housing development site plan, but the legislature plainly contemplated that an affordable zoning applicant will submit draft zoning regulations. So, you have to do that. And then the court said, thus, although the plaintiff was not required, that's what this gentleman is saying, to file an application for a zoning text amendment to build an affordable housing development, it nonetheless statutorily was entitled, and the word is highlighted in the case, to seek a change in the zoning regulations governing the subject property and to have that application considered by the zoning commission under the standard set forth in 8-30G. So, I'm not telling you that I have the right to do it willy-nilly. I'm relying on the Supreme Court of the state of Connecticut. So, I hope that answers your question. I want to give all these exhibits, I guess I could give them to Rob. I was going to do it when it was my turn, but, you know, you'll be able to see that when I was going to address them. I don't know if the public is not going to speak, or whether they want me to continue.
Yeah. Yeah, why don't we do that now while we're working on the technical issues here? Thank you. So, again, I'd like to invite the public up to speak. Same thing, just make sure you sign in and state your names and address for the record as you do. And for the first application, members of the public were delightfully briefed, and moved along quickly, and if you could make that effort as well to make your points quickly, that would be terrific. So, we have a first speaker here. Thank you.
Good evening. Andrew Galloway, 24 Pope No Road, Newtown. I submitted a two-page letter on Tuesday with my objection of why this is an unsafe condition. Since then, I, well, on Sunday, I took a site line measurement. At this point, the view from Route 6 eastbound is only 275 feet or less. Today, while researching through the Connecticut Department of Transportation's Highway Design Manual, I discovered that the recommendation from Connecticut DO2 is that for a 45 mile an hour speed zone, the limit on the sight line should be at least 500 feet. So, it is a safety issue. It gives you the grasp of objective to this application, and I struggle to prove it.
Good evening. I'm Samuel Strummer, inside of it, 9 Cover Bridge Road, apartment number 3310, actually makes the last application. I've lived in Newtown for seven years, and I've been there for eight and a half. I actually support rezoning this section of town to residential. I was very fortunate to be able to find a place right here in town after my marriage fell apart, and I'm all about enabling others to have the same opportunities that I did. Newtown is a great town, and I know too many people that have moved out of town because we just had no room for them. It breaks my heart. However, should this commission choose to vote against a specific application before you tonight, and I can understand why, I urge you to immediately rezone this corridor for residential use on our own terms. Local action is the best defense of local control. Right now, it feels like we are being tugged between two extremes, dense affordable housing apartment complexes forced on us by the state, or two-acre McMansion lots that only the wealthy can afford. We desperately, desperately need what's missing in the middle. Starter homes, downsizer homes, condos, homes for families who want to start here and for seniors who want to stay here. Specifically, I oppose, should this amendment fail, that this commission zone this section of the ID4 corridor for 8,000 square foot lots, small enough to be affordable for new families and downsizing seniors of all walks of life. By zoning proactively for the sustainable, low-impacted development that we desperately need, we can partner with developers in good faith instead of fighting them through lengthy and expensive litigation. This is how we build a Newtown that continues to welcome families home. The choice is ours. We can build our future on our terms or wait for the state to force it on theirs. Thank you.
If you could just sign in.
Okay. Hello. Christine Updike, 10 Laissez-Bourne Road. So, I've been reading a lot about this. This is my first PNC meeting. I read the notes, read the minutes, and I am perplexed because I understand there's frustration about a mandate for hardship. The real pressure, though, is coming from this within. I mean, we're, we have this growing gap between what costs to live here and what ordinary people can afford. So, when I say ordinary people, I'm talking about the young trade apprentice who works on our homes that can't afford a red one, and the recent college grad who doesn't want to live in her parents' basement, and the restaurant servers who take care of our families every week, retirees who don't want to live in a retirement community, but they want to downsize, the volunteer firefighters who protect us, but they don't have a place to go, where to live, right in Newtown. There's, these are the people who keep Newtown running, and we don't have enough space for them. So, no one wants massive, no one, not me, not anyone, wants massive complexes that change the character of this town, but we do need some smaller unit housing done right in the right place. So, if we are going to add roughly 401 or 200 units, I think Mount Pleasant Road near ID84 makes sense. The infrastructure is already there. There's water, there's sewer, there's roads. It's a commercial corridor, not a residential street, and this isn't about changing Sandy Hook Center or the borough. It's about using highway adjacent, highway adjacent area appropriately. Walkability matters less here because residents will drive short distances to work, school, and shopping, but I'd still like to see a plan connecting this development to nearby retail. That's a smart route. But here's my ask of the commission. If you're not comfortable with a specific proposal, don't just vote no. I mean, we're going to have to say yes to some of this type of housing. Let's proactively rezone the corridor for the types of housing that Newtown needs. So, I, I know Sam had a proposal for 8,000 square, sorry, I'm supposed to address you. 8,000 square foot homes, that's another story, and that's a possibility, and you can vote for that. But, you know, this is a whole situation that we need to solve. We wouldn't need affordable housing mandates if housing were simply affordable. So, smaller lots, reasonable zoning, market rate homes. If every project is denied and no alternative is offered, we're not preserving Newtown's character. We're guaranteeing the state will decide for us. So, lead proactively, plan for housing that serves plumbers and teachers and firefighters and retirees, and give the next generation a place to live. Thank you.
I'm George Brewster. I leave diagonally one property away, across the street from this proposal. You have been elected to promote orderly town development by regulating land use and property development, to ensure coordinated growth and to protect public welfare, property values, and the environment. I have been in Newtown for over 60 years. There is a lot of traffic in this area, especially when Route 84 backs up. The traffic report, according to Attorney Bellis, stated the sight, sightline for this project was adequate. That could only refer to westbound traffic when coming out of the driveway. Eastbound traffic has very limited visibility from the west and is very dangerous even now. This brings me to the conclusion that all the trees will need to be cut down. The hill and topography of that entire area will endure massive change. Once they cut down all the trees, the trees are gone. If you have not personally driven out to this end of town, please do so before you make your final decision. We have a lot of trees on both the left and right sides of the road in this area. In Newtown, on the left, just before you get into Bethel, you will see where many beautiful trees were cut down. This happened 10 years ago. Now, 10 years later, that complete section of the hill is being dug out and destroyed for development. This is what will happen if this proposal moves forward on a much larger scale. The sightline and topography, when driving west on Mount Pleasant Road, is such that removing all the trees and the hill will be necessary. I do not know, if you grant these requests, if they can then move forward to destroy this land before another improvement process or not. I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know what the process is, but I know what happened to those trees on the left, and that's at Baron for 10 years. So, if this goes through, can they just start cutting down everything? I don't know, but you all know I'm, I don't. If so, then anyone can write up a description of anything, add affordable housing, and build it anywhere they wish in the town of Newtown. Newtown will soon be a city of cement. No trees, no, no nice environment. There are other sections in town where this proposal is much more beneficial to Newtown. There is no reason to believe residents at this location will drive five miles into Newtown to shop when shops are right next door in Bethel and Danbury. So, all your, your, no, shopping is going to be west. It's not coming into Newtown. It's not beneficial to Newtown. One more point I would like to make. I read in the Newtown D that Attorney Bellis stated that requests can only be denied due to public health and safety concerns. A dictionary meaning for health is that it can apply to something that is physically or morally beneficial. This project in this location is neither, nor has this project, in my opinion, coordinated growth for this area of Newtown. Thank you.
Can you hear me all right? Okay, I'd like to speak a little bit further on the sidelines. I'll dig down a little bit deeper since it's already been discussed by several other residents of Newtown. My name is Donald Leonard, resident of Liberty at Newtown, 38, Joe Alford. As several people have mentioned, the property, the proposal, at 188, 190, Pleasant Road, fronts Route 6 on a sweeping east-west curve of the road. The dental office that's shown on the map here is immediately to the right of the exit driveway from the property. The proposed speed limit on Route 6, where it passes in front of the proposed development, is 45 miles per hour. This section of Route 6 borders Bethel and is not controlled by police from either town. Drivers know this and often drive to stretch of road at speeds that far exceed the posted limit. I mention this because it is a potential hazard for people exiting the proposed development as it is for those of us at Liberty. When I moved to Liberty 20 years ago, there was almost no traffic. There are times now when I come out of the property to turn either right or left. You think we need a traffic light because you have to sit and wait as streams of cars going west, and when they pass, there's another stream of cars going east. So, it's kind of like, take your chances. The sightline to the west is obstructed, as several others have mentioned, and it gets particularly different at this time of the year because of the low sun angle from the west in the evening hours and from the east in the morning hours is really blanking. It makes it very difficult to see. So, that's coming out of the property, whether it's Liberty or the proposed development, it's something you have to deal with, and it's an unsafe condition. This is a view of the exit road from Route 6. I assume that this would be modified, it would be wider, but nevertheless, it comes down the hill to where it joins Route 6. This is the view coming down the driveway as it approaches Route 6, and this is the view as you approach the corner. It's significantly obstructed to the right, and the only way you can see what's coming is to move almost out into Route 6. So, you have to creep out in order to get a view of what's coming to the right and also from the left. So, right turns from the exit are hazardous due to the sideline destruction to the west and traffic that's coming from the east. What makes it even worse is the attempted left turns because the amount of traffic that's coming from that direction is significant, and when that traffic clears and the light turns green up by the big Y, you've got another stream of traffic coming in the other direction. Okay. So, I just want you to project it to the future for a moment. Let's say the development at 67 Mount Pleasant Road is approved, and the proposed development that we're speaking about now is approved as well. So, you're a bus, school bus, trying to get out of that property, and you're waiting for cars to pass. Meanwhile, another 25 or 30 cars are coming out of the same property and are trying to get out as well. This is what they have to deal with. This was 7:30 in the morning, Tuesday morning of this week. Just wanted you to get a sense of how difficult it is. Okay. So, what we're suggesting is that the proposed regulations should be modified to address this dangerous situation and must require that sightlines in both directions for the accessway be at a safe distance. The regulation should also read that sight distances in each direction at the driveway exit must meet or exceed the requirements of the Newtown Road Ordinance and any applicable state regulations. One final point. The applicant's application incorrectly stated that the proposed development is not within 500 feet of a adjoining municipality. That's incorrect. It's 125 feet from the edge of the property to the Bethel line, as depicted on this chart. This was the application they submitted. They said no to the original municipalities. It's either. It's either trying to hide something to avoid sloppy work. Thank you very much. I appreciate your listening. If you could please sign in as well.
Hi. Good evening, commissioners. Thank you again for having me speak. My name is Maureen T. King of 74, Liberty, in Rockfield, and as stated before, my husband, Dennis, and I own and operate 182 Mount Pleasant and 184 Mount Pleasant Road, directly next to the proposed property development. I just want to highlight three areas of concern. Obviously, the traffic is one. We talked about it a few times, so I just want to highlight on that again. Property access rights and notification of a new waiting parcel. As stated before, this intersection road is difficult, but you did a little bit of homework, and the proposed driveway sits on the curve after an elevation rise coming from Bethel. So from the San Antonio Gas Station in Bethel to this driveway, there's approximately a seven-foot increase in elevation, but the existing driveway sits on the downslope heading east from Bethel to Newtown. That incline and the downslope, combined with a bend in the road, limiting the sightline. Cutting down trees is not necessarily going to fix that. This isn't theoretical, as you saw from Don's little picture. Just even trying to take a left of our driveway today, you cannot see approaching eastbound traffic until vehicles are relatively close. You look, you wait, you say your prayer, and then you're done it. Now multiply that by hundreds of downed trucks, school buses, delivery trucks, emergency vehicles, and the road safety issue. I respectfully invite each and every one of you to come to 184 Bethel Road at peak hours or any time of day and try to take a left turn from the shared driveway. It becomes immediately clear how limited that visibility is. Recontrolling the property is a developer's incentive. The last thing you will not solve the problems with the topography of the road and remove sightlines. For safety, I ask that the commissioner require that the entrance to this proposed development be moved further uphill to a flatter and straighter section of Mount Pleasant Road, where the driveway has adequate sightlines. In doing that, our shared driveway access is actually state-of-connection driveway, and has served our property for more than thirty years, as I stated before. So we expect that our current access rights to remain intact, unaltered, and unconditionally protected in any area of the world. If the development driveway location changes, and I believe that it should, our inquiries and agreements must be remaining safe, convenient, and fully preserved. And then, lastly, there's a triangular parcel that Don just pointed out on his proposal just beyond 184 Mount Pleasant Road. It's a vacant lot, and it's a budding property. And I ask for the record, has the owner of this property been notified? Will last inquiry and drainage affect that parcel? And has run off with that parcel been evaluated? The property owner deserves the same transparency and protection as any other owner. And in closing, I'm not here to oppose the development, but the state proposition, I made it mature, but what is built is safe, legal, and fair to the existing property owners and the community. I respectfully ask that the driveway be located uphill to avoid dangerous sightlines, that our access rights be formally reserved, and that the triangle parcel have been notified and protected with impact. Thank you for your time and attention.
What you're being handed is a packet of information with three documents in it, plus a, I threw in a map as well. The first document...
Just pay your address, please.
I'm sorry. Heidi Winslow at 62, Joel Court, Liberty. So the first document is an annotated version of what the applicant has presented to you, an annotated version of the text amendment, pointing out all the things that are wrong with it, many of the things that are wrong with it. But the most important thing that's wrong with it is that his definition of site plan is very different from that which you are accustomed to in Newtown. In Newtown, we have a site plan requirement, which is at Arc 10 of your regulations. He has defined site plan in an entirely different way in this text amendment. Basically, he's suggesting that there should be a slightly up-modified idea of the conceptual plan. He has in this amendment, or text amendment, a requirement that the commission approve anything that complies with this text amendment, but this text amendment does not require a site development plan to which you are accustomed. It sets forward its own standards of what is safe in Newtown. So it, for example, has nothing in it about sightlines. All it says is you have to have a driveway that is concrete or asphalt. Says nothing about the width of the driveway, nothing about the slope of the driveway, nothing about the sightlines when you get to the road, nothing about the ninety-degree angle of meeting the highway. None of that is in this text amendment, and he doesn't have to give it to you. Drainage, he has said, our engineer will prepare a drainage plan. That's all. No standards for that drainage plan, nothing. He is not going to give you a full site plan for your approval, such as you're accustomed to. So the second thing that's in this document is a proposed text amendment or new zone, which is entirely drafted and which makes more sense, and it's done professionally and it's a lot better organized, and it has clearer definitions, and I urge you to look at that at your leisure. The third document is grounds for denial, and states item by item, line by line, what you should put into your denial letter. I didn't put into it, as far as the notifications are concerned, the questions raised by Attorney Mitchell, Attorney Mitchell, who knows perfectly well what he's talking about when he talks about mortgagee's rights. And the, but I don't think I need to put it in there because the applicant is well aware that that concern has been raised, even though he has been unable so far to answer Mr. Mitchell's questions. I thank you, and I thank you for your time, as always.
Thank you.
My name is Linda Hasky, and I'm with Liberty in Newtown, and I'm the president of the Home Association, and I just want to take one minute and say, look at all these people sitting in the back. They're here, and they've been sitting here from meeting after meeting on this topic. These are my neighbors, and we're all very concerned about this, and we just want you to know that. Thank you.
To the lawyers, to the free Franklin Court, also, liberty at Liberty, Newtown. I have about five, six pages to talk to the commissioner. Now, it has been reduced to about one minute and a half. I agree with Heidi, with Ms. Winslow, Joyce Winslow, and Sergio in regards to what she presented. I encourage you to please deny the text amendment. The text amendment simply means that the developer is doing your jobs, creating the own regulations for the benefit of profitability. That's what they're looking for. I didn't want to repeat some of the things that somebody already said, but I want to bring one point that is extremely important related to health and safety, the utility capacity. There are many concerns regarding the adequacy of water capacity for this project, given the restrictions that we have been imposed during the summer months. It's important the commission demands that a real server or aquarium be presented to you before you make any commitment. It's important. It's important because we need to ensure that the park has the adequate water for the partial pressure that is needed in case of a fire. Another point is that the emergency vehicles. I am on surty on the conceptual plan that has been carefully, it had been actually carefully considered, only access and emergency vehicles and so forth. I spoke to the final marshal, trying to get an opinion in regards to the conceptual site plan, and he said, I have no comments. I cannot make any comments until the final site plan is produced. This is a big concern, especially knowing that it has been maybe inadvertently that the developer has presented, or being certain it is absolutely important, also regarding to the point that in his application, he indicated that the property adjacent to the left, it was not within 500 feet of the actually vicinity path of the municipality. The final point that I would like to leave here after work, I happen to be a commissioner, previous commissioner, and the water pollution control authority approves it. I wanted just to make a point. You have to realize how much water is going to be consumed. This is why I emphasize on the importance of having an aquarium in order to... The calculation that I did here is that the three hundred units that have been proposed, it will consume around twenty-two million gallons of water, if you're based, twenty-two million gallons. With that fact of reading, the other profit has been produced of sixty-seven units, it will be another about five million gallons a year. So I beg the commission to not to sign a plan check at this point in time. The moment they approve this text amendment, you're lost, because the developer will reveal to whatever they want, after we heard they had been cited, the Supreme Court favors this particular proposal. And finally, I wanted to thank one of the state representatives that I invited personally to be present to hear how A30G had been weaponized in many iterations, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that his presence is important, because in those sessions, he'll be taking place now in November 12. Thank you very much.
Can you sign in, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for listening to me today. My name is Mary Louise Record, and I lead the Total Brothers Development. One question I'd love to ask is, how many developments of this sort are there in the process of being built or up for approval in Newtown? I'm addressing one, if that's okay.
Yeah, I don't think we have any information to answer that question. I mean, there are projects in development right now that are being built.
Right, yeah.
We have, well, I own it, but there's one other A30G, which you heard tonight.
Okay, I believe that Mr. Shapiro has a parcel of land on South Main Street that is on the market right now, so it would prefer me to say that he developed this moment before he attacks something like this. The other thing is, as far as safety is concerned, one of the concerns that we seniors have, although many of us think we should just walk on into that for the night, is the EMTs. They are an open load that little Hollyvale Station covers with vast territory. Now, you're going to tell me that Bethel can be done by a slot. It's not Bethel's job. It may be courtesy to the town of Newtown. Please and please consider this as a safety issue. The other thing is, I almost cried when I heard those people in Bridge Road, you said Bridge Road, they were never getting a raw deal. Please consider them too. That's all I can say. Thank you.
If you'd like, please.
I'd like to limit now to five floor speakers. If there are volunteers who want to speak, fine. If not, we'll open it back to the applicant.
Still under the last meeting.
Oh, wait there. Sweeten. Okay. Again, for the applicant, I'm Attorney Stephen Bellis, and I have some exhibits from my rebuttal. I've uploaded them with Rob, and I can hand him the hard copies, and I also have a map for you for each commissioner. Okay, so I'm just going to take you through a couple exhibits, and the reason I submitted these exhibits is because I listened to the comments of the public. I took notes, and I'm going to try to respond to some of those comments. I've already discussed with the commissioner on the end the 131 Beach Road case, so I'm not going to reiterate that. So if we go to Exhibit Nine, Exhibit Nine is a report from William Kenny. Bill Kenny's a soil scientist. He went to Yale and has been doing this for a very long time in Connecticut, and the reason I attached his report is that there were some comments about environmental concerns that the public had. The long and the short of it is that we will be going to wetlands, and I've given you all a map. And basically, what that map tells me and should tell you is that none of this property is going to be built or developed in a regulated area, meaning in the wetlands that have been flagged. More importantly, none of the activity will be built or impacted on the upland review area, which is 100 feet. That's why I gave you the map. I think it should be oriented on your drawing. So what that tells everybody is that, yes, we will be going to wetlands, but they will probably come back with a report that they don't have jurisdiction or that there's no adverse impact on the wetlands. Bill Kenny wrote this report October 17, 2025. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but basically, he says, "No activities are proposed to occur within wetlands or watercourses. Assets, no direct adverse impacts will occur." He gives this whole report, and I'll just read the conclusion. The conclusion is, "We completed an assessment of existing and proposed and wetland and watercourse conditions related to the proposed multifamily residential development. Based on this assessment, a review of project documentation, and consultation with project engineers, and thorough differentiation of soil erosion segmentation measures, as well as stormwater management plan, we conclude that the proposed project will not result in short or long-term adverse impacts to wetlands or watercourses." So that's Exhibit Nine. I gave you Exhibit Ten. Exhibit Ten is, I think a gentleman said that our traffic engineer did not, Kermit Hewitt was sitting behind me, did not put into his report about an... put into his report about an accident with a telephone pole. So I just forget the gentleman's name. I apologize. But it is in the report and so I, you know, um, there was an accident with some utility poles, so, um, I just wanted to make sure everyone, everyone knew that we had recognized that. Exhibit 11 is, um, some comments, um, from Jason Edwards concerning some of the, um, points that were raised about emergency access, driveway, emergency vehicles, retaining walls and stormwater management. Uh, since he wrote the report and is here, I'd rather have him go and discuss that exhibit. Exhibit 12, um, a lot of talk has been made of sightlines. Um, so let me make it clear. Back on the first time we had our hearing, Kermit Hua, um, gave the requirements that depending on the speeds, um, and he's located and he's identified what those speeds are, 51 miles per hour, well, westbound, 49 eastbound. As long as there was, in his words, 566 feet looking east and 544 feet looking west, um, then he would have added the sightlines. So the next line that you see on this screen, which is exhibit 12, is an, uh, is a slide showing you that the sightlines will be 800 feet to the right, eastbound or left, westbound, uh, in either direction of that driveway. Again, I'll have Jason Edwards discuss it and yes, I guess some of, uh, the people that have talked about sightlines, there would have to be, um, some removal of the hill in order to obtain those sightlines, but all the, um, sightline distances would be on our, my client's property. So 800 is more than the 566 and 544 feet that you need. The last document I have, I think I'm on 13, has to do with, um, a gentleman's concern about the water pressure. I think everybody in town kind of knows what happened, but I might as well put it in as an exhibit. Jason can go over it as well. There was problems with the wells from the flooding. Apparently, the aquarium has made a deal with the Pudita, um, company or club and to obtain more water. And once they do that, there will be sufficient water for these projects, including Mount Pleasant. So, um, obviously someone had suggested that you need a will serve letter. Generally, when, when we do our final site plans, we, we get a will serve letter. But basically the commission just has to know that once these repairs are made or once this, um, either that or they decide to go ahead and purchase the water, um, from where we are now, that it will be adequate water. Some of the comments, um, I think had to do, uh, with, uh, planning and I don't disagree with what the gentleman said about, um, you know, the need for starter homes. Um, I'm not sure how that impacts on this particular project. I don't think anything he said was wrong. Some, some of the other women had come up and stated that, you know, there's kind of a gap between, um, the very expensive homes and the, and the need for some more affordable housing. Again, good point, but, um, you know, I don't know. I agree with all of those speakers, but, um, I'm not sure how that would impact with this particular project. Whether we like it or not, we have a state law that allows, um, the developer or his attorney, um, to propose his own regulations and to propose his own site plan. And unfortunately, um, as detailed as maybe Newsnow's report is, it doesn't have to use the, um, standards or regulations set by a town. So in this particular case, um, the only thing that I'm telling you is that we would have to come back for a final site plan approval. But again, the standards would be the same. Uh, they would be evaluated under eight dash 30G and does it abide by the text amendment that you may or may not have passed? So I recognize that you may be familiar with your own regulations and there's some frustration because we're not following those regulations. But I didn't write the state law. I'm just following it. This is not my first rodeo in doing this. Um, I have four or five of these that got approved in Fairfield. Two or three in Stratford, one in Beacon Falls, one in Milford, and that goes along and on. Um, and they're all the A30G applications. And whether some of them, the commissions have approved, um, on their own, others we go to court and, um, I go to the court. So, um, it's because the way the law is written, the judges feel that the legislature wanted affordability in these A30G applications and therefore they shift the burden to the commission to give substantial reasons as to why the application shouldn't have been approved. I will tell you that, um, we, we have given you, I think, what we call enough information for you to make a decision on the text amendment and zone change. And that when the final sites, when we go to wetlands and get their letter, uh, we come back with a final site plan. I think you'll be familiar with, um, how to evaluate that site plan. It will have a full drainage report that you're all, stormwater drainage report that you're all familiar with. It'll have a soil and erosion, uh, plan. You're all familiar with that. It'll have a lighting plan. It'll have a planting plan. It'll have everything that you're pretty much familiar with. And, um, then you can look at that final site plan and say, okay, you know, we like this, but we don't like this. You're allowed to make reasonable changes to it. And, um, that's when we'll have that discussion, but we're not there yet. You know, that's not for this evening. The seat, for the seating is simply, can we, um, have an affordable plan on this particular property that will allow for this many units and this many affordable units? And then we come back with an affordable, with a final site plan certified by an engineer or architect and with all the things that you're all familiar with on your site plans. So, um, you don't see that tonight, but you will eventually see it. So nothing's going to get built or no one's going to get a building permit until all those things have been put before you and you've approved it. And if you don't like what has been put before you, you have a couple of choices. You can make reasonable changes and if we agree to those changes, that's fine. If we don't agree with the changes, um, then, uh, you know, and, and it gets denied, then we can go to court. So, um, I, I don't want to stand here and say that we're not amenable to, to working with the commission. That's just not true. Which is not there yet, that's all. I'd like to have Jason give you a little, uh, input so you feel comfortable about the fact that, um, there is the ability to have storm drainage on this site, um, that they're probably, um, you know, a little bit of, let him talk a little bit about the safety of fire trucks and those sorts of things so that you feel comfortable.
For the record, Jason Edwards, Principal, James and Associates, Engineering Surveyors from located in 227 Stepford, Northern Eastern. Nice, my firm prepared, uh, site development plans, surveying information for this project. So just as to go back to sheets, um, exhibits, exhibit 11 was a letter from my office. Uh, this was in response to some of the comments from the commission and public. Emergency access was raised as an issue. Uh, we do have, um, let's pull up the sightline here. We do demonstrate, this is, it's hard to see on this, but there's a traffic path here from the ladder truck to make it all the way up around the back avenue. We also, this, this plan is actually the, um, the plan that's going to be going into the wetlands commission. So it's a little bit more complete than what was submitted, uh, schematically to begin with for this application. Uh, but we now have added, um, an accessway around the side of this building prior to used to be a pass group. So we created more, more, uh, access around the back here. There's also, uh, grass papers, access along the back of the building, so we can have it from the back. And that's the case with all these buildings, so there is an access to the rear of all of them, um, gravel or, uh, or, uh, grass paper of some sort. So we have, um, you know, we, we do also have a, uh, boulevard style entrance here that's a split with the, uh, median as we come in. That's not a requirement of the town due to times driveway standards, um, but, uh, we felt it was, uh, a good idea in this situation because of the pace of the program we're coming out. Um, we do have the ability to carry that all the way up through if we, if we had to, but it didn't seem like the, the town's, um, driveway requirements for commercial driveway, I believe, are 20 feet. That's in my letter. And we're at 24 feet wide, so we were in excess of that minimum anyway. Um, so the, you know, the, that commercial driveway is 20 feet wide. Uh, that's second year. We've got 24 feet wide driveways, uh, for all two-way access. And again, main access drive, there is adequate space there to widen to, to cool the median, um, for as long as the teams need. I don't think there's any reason we'd need to go all the way to the back. It would probably be more in the way than anything. But, um, we have, and also the emergency vehicle maneuvering, I just showed you there that, you know, we should provide to that building. Retaining walls and property lines. Uh, there was some question about constructability of retaining walls, um, you know, in proximity of the property lines. The only place that we really got close is back in this corner. Now we do have rooms, this line is building away a little bit if we needed to, but we're more than five feet away here. You know, I might add a typo in my report that says 12 feet, it should take 12 inches, I corrected that here. But, you know, we, if you go down to a city or area, they're, they're building right on the property line in some cases. They can do it with sheet piles. They can build with the footing that come all the way onto the property, you know, the ways to, to do it. But we provide five feet, which reveals, you know, more than adequate to, to build the wall that's required there. So our management, uh, we, we have actually prepared a fully, uh, report that we're almost finished it, um, it's ready to move to weapons. So we've, we've sized this. We have a series of stolen, um, underground stormwater chambers here, uh, that, and then discharge in the levels, brothers, two on this weapon, then more on this weapon. And then we also have a collection under here that discharges out to the state highway. But we've gone through all that. We've done soil testing. We've, um, designed, um, a stormwater system that meets the, the EEP guidelines. Bill Kenny's office took a review based on this, these plans and the, the stormwater report that we provided him to get his opinion. So we've, we've, uh, proved that out, um, to the extent that we need to. I think Steve wanted to be in on this same plan. I was just going through, just a little more study. Sightlines, it is, um, certain future right now, the sightlines are, are not active. The existing driveway actually comes in just to the side of, reaching my question, the existing driveway, which, um, is on the, it's not exactly on the center line of the bar. Try, but we're over the side a little bit, but this entire hillside, um, sorry. This entire, uh, hillside is going to have to be lowered, uh, trees cleared. And you can see on the Bethel side here, there's a sidewalk that was, was, uh, already built down to here. We're going to essentially match it to that, that street front engine that they've done a, a full street skate that goes through there. Um, and as some of the, the speakers have said before me, right now it's, it's a dangerous condition here because you can't, you really can't see. Whatever is done, you know, to, to, to construct this will improve that, um, regardless of the additional vehicles, you're going to be able to see. Down this way is really not so much of an issue from over here. By order to get the sightlines to work around this corner, we have to be over here. Otherwise, you don't have enough license. So that's why it's over as far as it is, uh, to try to make sure we can see far enough down the road this way. There is also, uh, this is the state highway. Uh, this project is largely funded and has to be for the, um, OSA, Office of State Traffic Administration. I think that's what that stands for. Um, they could determine that this needs a light here. Or I know there's other projects that are, are also potentially coming forward. With the combination of multiple projects coming together here, there could be a light that's put here. But that's really not something that, uh, we get to decide. That's what they come back to us with. The traffic engineer would work with the state traffic engineer to determine what exactly happens here. And they're going to have a lot of input on how this is, um, rebuilt or rearranged and so forth.
So that is our rebuttal, uh, to the, um, public's comments. Uh, I asked that the public hearing be closed and that, um, unless you have any questions of me or my team, I have the traffic experts and Jason here. If not, yes, it's going to be closed and, um, hopefully you'll, uh, agree that this is only step one. And that we will then go to wetlands and get the appropriate, um, storm drainage boards and all the other items that I just articulated as part of the final site plan. We come back before the commission and we go through it in detail. And that would be a lot more, uh, a lot, lot more detail.
Thank you. Um, any questions or comments from commission members?
Mr. Edwards, could you talk a little bit more about that sightline? I understand that you're going to grade away the hillside so you can see 800 feet. But how do you see the cars coming over the hill? Because when you grade that hill, you're going to be grading around the road. Or do you plan to relocate the actual state road?
I'm not sure. Jason Edwards, I think I understood your question. Um, you're asking how we're going to see over the humpy road. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because this sightline shows you what they want around the road, over the hill.
Yes, and then there is a hump in the middle of the, the center of the road here. What we've done analysis, we've surveyed this, we've looked, there's this criteria from, from VOT as to where exactly the end of it is. So we have to come back 15 feet from the travelway and a height of at least three feet. We have to be able to see that same height and distance away from the, from the traffic. So we do a topographic survey of this entire area and then we, we do a, uh, basically a visual profile through it to figure out, okay, we have to cut the rock back to this elevation or we have to cut the ground back and we can see over the home. Uh, so we did that analysis. It's one of the first things we did, uh, because we knew it could be potentially issued here. So we've, basically, we've got a profile, a 3D view that we've cut through this, that we can say that we can see through to the other side. Uh, once that's cut down, we're going to be able to see through.
And you might have available for us?
The profile? Sure, that would be part of, um, the VOT application. Yes, we can, I don't know if the height here is still, but it would be.
Well, I'd like to understand, okay, how that, how that's going to work because you've got the road going this way. You've got a sightline that's going around it.
It's going, it's cutting through the corner, right?
It's going through the corner, but the cars are going to be riding over the road unless you're going to regrade the road.
Yeah, they're going to regrade all shoulder and the elevations are going to be.
Well, then you can be changing the pavement on the, on the highway.
I don't anticipate changing pavement on the highway though, because you can see over the, um, over the, from where we are.
I would really like to see that announced.
Okay, that would be part of, I'm sure the next round.
And any other comments or questions from the commission?
I, I just like to clarify something about the map and the 800 foot sightline, eastbound. It's not clear to me. I assume that the end of the 800 feet is in the oncoming line.
Yeah, this was just the schematic, so yeah, it's, there's a red light right in terms of that one.
Okay, you're all, all good? So, uh, at this point, uh, I've heard your, uh, request, uh, to, to close the public hearing. And I'm, I'm inclined to grant that I will, I will say, um, from my perspective, you know, again, without a site plan here, this is a lot to absorb. And, um, I, I'm not prepared. And I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight. We don't have to vote on this tonight, and I would suggest to the commission that we take to the next meeting at least to vote, and we can absorb this. It's unconventional to us, obviously, to, you know, think about health and safety when it's a zone change and a text amendment, it kind of puts us in a very difficult position. And, which I don't like, but it is what it is. So what I'd like to do for now is to entertain a motion to close the public hearing at this point.
David, I would propose that we keep the public hearing open until next week. Some people may have some more after tonight's meeting, may have some more thoughts, and may want to provide us some more input. I don't think we need to close the public hearing tonight.
Are we, are we up against a timeline here? Yeah, I don't think we can. You have to grant, are you willing to grant that?
I am not for the following reasons, because as I said, the public had this opportunity twice to speak, and they did a great job. And they presented evidence into the record, and then I gave my rebuttal. And that's just the way things work, you know, just keep things open and go back and forth. So I am not prepared to give an extension. I understand, you know, the site tonight, I think thirty-five days, if you need an extension on that, let me know.
Okay, thank you. So there lies the issue.
But we don't have to close the public comment.
That's correct.
We continue this conversation, just not the public.
Yeah, so again, I'd like to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, separately from each other. Thank you. So let's first, I'd like to.
I'll make a motion to close the public.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the text amendment, application twenty-five point twenty-two, to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
One second. And then I'd like to make a motion to close the public comment on application twenty-five point twenty-three by one eighty-eight, one ninety, Mount Pleasant Road LLC.
And I'll say.
Thank you.
All right, so all those in favor?
You can have a discussion after we close the public.
Okay.
My question is, do we have a choice on closing the public hearing?
Not, no. Not if they're giving an extension.
You don't have a choice?
No.
So this is kind of an academic's vote, Jim, right? If we don't have a choice, what does, if we don't have a choice, what does a nay vote on this motion mean?
So you don't have a choice on closing the public hearing, they won't give you an extension because your time is running out, but does that mean that, that, you know, now you're still getting to make the decision, and you can decide whether you have sufficient information in order to make that? So that's part of your discussion in terms of your decision, not part of your discussion as to whether or not you close the public hearing?
And we can have that.
And then you can have a motion.
Okay, so what's?
And that's, you don't have to make a conversation tonight, it could be your next meeting? There's no automatic approval in this situation? You're gonna have discussion?
Well, because we're not talking about approval, we're talking about closing the public hearing.
Correct.
And you're saying we're up against a hard stop on that. So what does a nay vote on this motion mean?
Well, if there's.
Because the motions are about closing the public hearing.
So are you saying you didn't have sufficient numbers to close the public hearing?
Well, what if we don't close the public hearing by this tone?
Well, then you would have a, you'd say you were, you violated the time period that you, because you won't give you an extension. So, I mean, this, you run out of time for the public hearing unless you're doing an extension. And instead you're not giving an extension, so ergo, public hearing.
Okay, thank you, it's not clear, but thank you.
The public hearing needs to be closed, but then the consequences of him not giving you an extension or you not having sufficient information, that's something you can have a discussion about in terms of the decision on that.
I understand that, I'm just talking about the motion to close the public hearing. Okay, I'm trying to understand that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the text amendment. So all those in favor of the motion to close the public hearing, the text amendment, vote by saying aye. Aye. We have a proposal to close the public hearing and a second on the zone change. All those in favor of closing the public hearing on the post-zone change, vote by saying aye. Aye. Okay, so the, what we can do now, as we discussed, we can absorb this, we can talk now, I would suggest that we don't, because we have another application here, and that, you know, come next meeting, hopefully we'll be able to, a decision, if not, we'll talk to you about that as well. Okay, thank you. The date is December fourth, the council chambers across the street at seven P M. Yes. For those who are exiting, just please do so quickly and as timely as possible so we can continue with the meeting. Much appreciated. And again, I'll state again to the members of the public, appreciate the, how concise things were and how orderly people were and how civil the discussion was. Again, please, don't stay around and talk, we have a meeting to continue with that, or if you can read it tomorrow.
Application twenty-five point two-five by Civil One for potential exception for property located at Ninety Mount Pleasant Road, so as to construct two athletic fields, a proposed clubhouse building, seven thousand eight hundred seventy, seventy-five, seven thousand eight hundred seventy-five square footprint and associated parking landscaping, storm drainage, and utility improvements, as demonstrated on a set of plans titled "Proposed Athletic Field Complex," planning and zoning permitting set at for construction, Ninety Mount Pleasant Road in Connecticut, M V L five dash eight dash six dated August twentieth, twenty twenty-five, revised September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and also three documents submitted to the Land Use Agency dated September seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, revised November third, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, I now turn it over to the applicant again. We've heard the initial application, and now we start revisions or new information or responses to the public on it, so I hand it over to you.
Thank you, can you all hear me? Yes. All right, my name is Chris Blowsky, licensed civil engineer with Civil One, here to talk about Ninety Mount Pleasant Road. I'm going to go over some of the minor changes that we made, some additional information that we supplied. We have been answering a few questions from the public, from any commission members, and we'll go from there. So the first piece of information I want to share is that we did receive inland wetlands approval for the application at their October twenty-second meeting. There should be a copy of the resolution filed with the land use agency. Additionally, we did make some minor revisions to the plans that were, again, presented to the inland wetlands commission. For starters, the athletic field, we provided some more information on the drainage type and details, particularly the sizing, and now also the feature, the turf athletic fields will feature no added P F O S. So that was a condition of the inland wetlands protocol, and we are going to abide by that commission and work that condition moving forward. So again, no added P F O S in the turf. Additional curving drains have been added along the eastern edge of the parking lot, I'm bringing those up just quickly here, so, hold on a second. So right along this bottom of the slope here, we did add an additional curving drain, and same thing along the upper edge of this gravel path, just minor drainage improvements. And you can see detailed drainage within the field. So these are perforated pipes that travel beneath the field, there's space at twenty feet on the center, and around the perimeter of the fields, each one, there are what are called collector drains. So these underfield drains connect to the collector drains and then connect to the rest of our stormwater system. There was a request made by the inland wetlands commission to route these fields through a hydropneutic separator, which are water quality units, and we did abide by that request. So now all of the water from the fields, in addition to the parking lot, the building, et cetera, is going to be routed through a or two hydropneutic separators, one in this location and one in this location over here, and those pre-treatment stormwater quality measures before it enters into the basin at the bottom of the hillside. I've been talking about landscaping a little bit next, because we kind of have to do a little bit of the fields. So we did provide the landscaping plan in accordance with some comments that we received. So now we are featuring one-hundred percent native plants on site. The plan has also been designed in conjunction with Planners Choice, the owner in business here in Newtown, Connecticut. So they did offer some helpful suggestions on the plants, and additionally, they did recommend some specific plants within the filtration basin known as Silky Willows, which are known for their filtration techniques and abilities. So again, we did revise the landscape plan to feature those native plants, and that was a discussion point at the last meeting. We did increase after specialized plants in that basin to kind of further improve the landscape on the site. We did add a note that the soil erosion sediment control plans have been designed in accordance with the twenty-twenty-three Connecticut guidelines of soil erosion and sediment control. They were already designed in accordance with that manual, but we just made that note to make it clear. There is additional details the wetlands commission requested that were in the construction sequence, and I kind of want to talk about them now. So the full intent of the application of the applicant is to construct this building and the fields. Hang on one second, let me, and here. So this is the soil erosion and sediment control plan on the screen. So it's the full intent of the applicant to construct the fields, the building, et cetera. Now, we're talking timeline here, we're anticipating to get our approvals, hopefully, hopefully tonight and over the next several weeks and months, there's some other approvals apparently wrapped up, including a corrosion permit from the Connecticut D O T. Construction is slated to begin in twenty twenty-six. We are anticipating that construction will be completed on the soccer field for the fall playing series, or season, if you will. At that time, the building construction, the walls, the foundation walls should be poured. This is extremely, or is a rather expensive endeavor for our client, so they are working to secure currently financing for the building that is a B H O site. So once the fields are constructed, it is intended that the facility will be open and operational. We have had discussions with the Newtown Health District regarding the use of portable restroom facilities, all the fields are open and operational. The building will then be built while the fields are operational or finished per se, and then the site will be, will be complete, if you will, in accordance with the department. So again, you know, we're gonna get these fields constructed as fast as we can, but we need to secure our client, we need to secure the financing for the building portion of the site, and we hope to have that, you know, as soon as they get, the building will be constructed, but we just want to make sure that's clear to this commission, that fields are gonna get constructed first, then the building, in the interim, while the fields are open and operational, there will be portable restroom facilities on site, so there is a place for the public to use the restroom when accessing the facility. Some more notes here, we did revise the herb requirements, because we did have to move the fields just slightly from their original locations, they just shifted over a little bit in accordance with some drainage. We also added some team benches, so on this side of the field are going to be like the bleachers, per se, for spectators, and then you have team benches on the opposite sides. And again, that's consistent for both fields. I'll pull up the sight plan and conceal it here. So the, this side, again, is gonna have the bleachers and then our benches, and then this is gonna be the bleachers for spectators. Same thing with this field. Another point that was raised the last meeting was that our lights were too tall for the soccer field. We didn't re-engage our lighting consultant, and we have revised the height of the poles to be twenty-four feet from the finish line, which is in accordance with the town of Newtown regulations. You will note that the number of lights has increased. Higher the lights, the more the lights can spread out, we need less poles, when you decrease the height of the lights, we did have to increase the number of poles, so there now are four lights per, field lights, excuse me, on the upper side of the field, and four on the lower side of the field, so there's gonna be eight lights per field. The rest of the lighting throughout the parking light, the parking lot, and the driveways, et cetera, did remain unchanged. It is L E D dockside compliant in accordance with the town of Newtown regulations. There were some concerns raised about noise and kind of proximity to neighbors, so this was originally a part of the original submission, so it's not a new plan where we did update it. And I just kind of wanted to talk about this a little bit. So this is a site cross-section through the, through the upper soccer field, here we'll call it. This orange line represents the cross-section that you see here. So some neighbors, you know, again, we're concerned about the noise. The soccer fields are down at this elevation. There is a significant grade change to neighbors that are directly adjacent to this property. It's several feet, I mean, I'm talking fifty to sixty feet of vertical, and in terms of horizontal, I did measure off on our plans, and we have the minimum seventy-five foot natural buffer, so that's out in this white area here. And then the closest residence is approximately two hundred feet from the upper edge of the surface. So this line right here is another two hundred feet, and that is the one house, I believe that's located here, here. The other houses on the Lower Hill Road are approximately three hundred and fifty feet plus from this edge here. So even though, you know, we're doing our best to, we're doing our best to keep it as far away from the neighbors as possible, I do believe there is more than adequate distance and buffer to those existing residences and neighbors. And again, there was a concern about the noise. Soft surfaces, such as grass, tend to absorb noise, and due to the proximity of the fields and the elevations, et cetera, you know, the noise concerns, I expect to be minimal as type that are generated from this facility. Again, soccer fields are down here, you have the soil from the hillside, then you have an existing seventy-five foot, in most cases, seventy-five, a minimum in most cases, a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five foot natural wooded buffer, and then beyond that, you have the property lodge and the houses of the neighbors up there. Let's see, anything else here? We've been in discussions with the health department, we submitted an application for Plan B for septic, they received comments and were working back and forth on that. There are output soils on the site, so I'm not anticipating any issues there. There was a previous will serve issue or will serve letter from Aquarion for a prior application. We have re-engaged Aquarion and are working towards that. For this application, there is not going to be a spring required in the building, so we are only requesting domestic water service, so that is significantly less of a demand. Also, with the turf field, one benefit is they don't need near, they don't need nearly the amount of water in the natural athletic field we require, so that is a benefit. I don't have been knowing issues with Aquarion in town. Other than that, I believe that covers the majority of. Other than that, I believe that covers the majority of the points that I wanted to go through. Just to reiterate, we do meet the sight lines. Go back to the sight line here. Because just watching some of the other applications, I want to make sure that it's clear that we meet the sight lines. One second. So this road is 45 mile an hour speed limit. To be conservative in our sight line analysis, we use a 55 mile an hour design calculation. We are providing over 600 feet of sight distance. It goes off the page, but it's essentially this line in both directions. That's automatically reviewed as part of the Connecticut DOT approach permit. But again, just listening to some of the other applications before, I want to make sure that it's clear that we are going to be providing the minimum required sight distance for this application. In fact, it's a conservative approach and use a 55 mile an hour design speed in lieu of the 45 mile an hour speed limit. Other than that, welcome any comments from this commission. You know, we can review this application. It's a great fit for the site. We knew it would be great for the community. I know we've heard from several hours of the public support of this application. We look forward to hopefully breaking ground on this something soon. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to throw into the commission members very few questions and comments before I open up the public. Should be good.
Thank you. I have a concern that I've had a lot of accusations about over-reliant on the ITE chart without considering the other 150, 200 cases. This is one you shouldn't be relying on the chart. You've got a Saturday peak traffic explanation, and that is based on 11 ITE study studies. I think they suggest that if despite or fewer studies, active studies in the field that lead to those numbers, that maybe other steps should be taken to generate your own numbers. Like in this case, maybe looking at other soccer clubs and what they generate. I'm not saying that this is insufficient, but I'm just concerned about that we keep relying on just that simple chart without getting into it. But I assume that your operational peak hours do not coincide with the traffic background, traffic peak hours, the commuting hours. I assume that's true.
That's correct. So your peak hours usually have a morning peak and an afternoon peak. You know, our peaks are rather on the weekends. If you look at the data provided, actually, we don't anticipate hardly, barely anticipate any traffic during the weekday. It was three trips in the morning peak hour. And just a little bit on the ITE, that is accepted as the standard as you iterated. We are going to be staggering the games, so that will provide some balance there. And I think one key aspect of this application is you have the clubhouse. So what that does is nearly after the game, you aren't bolting to your car. There's locker rooms in the clubhouse. There's a little like indoor turf field, if you will, and a little practice area. So the traffic, it's not just immediately end the game right to your car. There's an area, again, it's enclosed with the clubhouse. It kind of provides an extra element of people steadily flowing in and out of the complex. I think that's a little bit interesting. I wanted, I didn't make that point last time, but I wanted to make that point this time where, you know, we don't anticipate any traffic issues here. We kind of re-earried that in our letter that brought the sight lines. I understand your concern regarding the ITE manual, but that is the accepted practice at this time. And we believe by the clubhouse and the staggering of the game times, that we should be able to successfully alleviate concerns related to traffic for the site.
Yeah, I recall that I hear a wetlands hearing that somebody estimated it might be 24 matches per field in a day, which would seem to be just constant, no real peak.
Right. But I believe that was an overestimation or at least in my calculations. So the hours, first of all, are limited for the field by regulations. And I anticipate there will be 24 matches per field, you know, in a day. And again, you know, due to the previous mentions, clubhouse and staggering the game. If you scatter the gaming time at soccer games at least an hour, it's not possible to have 24 games in a day.
It gives you a terrible hole of the space.
Yeah. Listen, I don't want to surprise the public. I do appreciate the concerns, but you know, at this time, it would be feasible to have 24 matches in a day. All right. Thank you. Thank you, though. I appreciate it.
Okay, any other? Okay. Now I'd like to invite members of the public to speak again. Much appreciated, both to the applicant and to members of the public here for this. That it's been a long night and a long couple of meetings for us too and for us in particular. So if you could keep it brief, I appreciate it. I know we had a couple of people that were unable to speak last time, so if you could go ahead and state your name and address for the writer.
Daryl Lumen, 498 Flatstone Route, also a managing member of Planner's Choice LLC, under Street and Town. First of all, commissioners, great to see you. I know some of you, not all of you, it would be a pleasure to meet the rest of you after the meeting. If you're someone in line staff, great to see you as well. So I'm not speaking again, just as the managing member of Planner's Choice, as I've appeared before various commissions. But as a Newtown resident and I'm proud parent of an AC athlete. So AC Connecticut is a wonderful program. But let me dive into something else first. I understand the concerns about development. A little very quick backstory, I've been trying not to bore anyone, but over 100 years ago, both sides of my family moved to Newtown. My great uncle Dave used a hay field just past this one. So if there's anyone that has some kind of sense of development of what's happened in the town, certainly the stories I've heard from my father, from my grandparents hold very strong. That said, there's a need for this field. A very limited field space in the greater Newtown area. The field where is currently, where the kids currently practice is not adequately lit, in my opinion. It's not adequately maintained. This would be a step, a very positive step in the right direction. Accessibility for a team that's formerly based at Dan, that is currently based at Danbury for practicing would be great, right off of Exit 9. And there's very limited use for the municipality. When we look at other possible, I know this is zone for industrial, other possible industrial uses might require a whole lot more input. Environmentally speaking, this is far less impactful than some industrial development might be. The scale is quite manageable, even taking, I have to take my hat off to Chris, who's a fantastic engineer. He's taken really good account for limited drainage of turf fields itself with curb drains and other subsurface solutions. And touching on the grade from the upper field to that east property line again, the 24-foot tall lights, poles are so short in comparison to the grade change. I don't think it's going to be impactful whatsoever to anybody on wishful will. And actually, I would respectfully disbelieve anyone that says trees make the best buffer. Soil does, in my experience, and I grow trees. You know, 50 feet, 50 feet practically, the grade difference is going to make a massive difference, and the trees will certainly resist. And now I want to step into one other piece, a simple one. As a group, is the engineering firm of choice for me professionally. And I've observed Claris and their work, and I have to say, it's top-notch. And I can say with confidence that their landscaping excavation contractor is one of the best around. I highly recommend both groups. And also, these are groups I want to make some ironic copies and people happy, right? Claris Construction has a fantastic reputation in town for good reason. They do good work. LRM is a fantastic landscape contractor. Anytime I call Mr. Man for anything, he always picks up the phone. And also, the Inland Wetlands Commission does a great job. So in terms of environmental concerns, staff, Steve Hookwire, I've worked with extensively. I have the highest and utmost respect for him as well as that commission, which, to be honest, about seven years ago, really ran me through the wringer, and rightfully so. I had some violations, and I respect what they did. And in final closing, I would be perfectly willing to let my expertise and connections to make sure that the planning and management commission is happy with the answer. Anything that you might need from me in terms of a look, making sure it's keeping the desired character of Newtown. I know it's always a concern for a lot of longstanding residents. I would be happy to do so. Thank you so much for your time, my friend.
Thank you.
Hello, folks. My name is Dylan Mary, 19 Brooklyn Road, Newtown. And so I'm grateful right now very much to the applicant because they've made a lot of improvement on this plan and a lot of really good explanation, especially with the grade that they just explained to us. And as a former collegiate athlete, the need for sports fields for youth development and professional development, I think, is outstanding. But I do have some concerns with the health and safety that this could pose to our community and to the health of the environment that I'm hoping the commission will take into account. But first, there are a lot of fields in Newtown. I don't know the specific needs of AC, and I hope that they can find what they need to. I just don't know that this site is appropriate for that. And so I want to talk about three concerns. The entrance is concerning to me, but the idling of vehicles there. I do also want to bring up microplastics and contaminants. I know that applicant has done a really good job of finding the best possible turf. But I do think that it's still worth considering, looking into, and the stormwater management plan. Firstly, with idling vehicles, on October 6th of this PNC meeting, the applicant said they plan to mitigate traffic concern by having a long drive on the property for cars to exit one vehicle at a time on Route 25. That's great. But with so many cars entering and exiting, I know there's staggering the games. They're having a clubhouse trying to limit the peak flow. But it does seem to me there would be 20, 40, maybe more cars trying to exit at one time, creating a backup of idling. And that can be not only an environmental concern, but a health concern for the contamination that that would cause in the air. According to recent news articles, Fairfield County has the worst ozone pollution in New England and some of the most polluted air in the nation. So why are we going to consider exacerbating that problem with more air pollution? Obviously, this is not factory. It's a lot better than that. People playing sports, but I really think that this plan should consider how many cars are going to be in there idling throughout the day. Now, with regards to Connecticut regulations on idling, the CT Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, D regulation 22A-171-18, a basement of air pollution. Mobile sources such as motor vehicles, except as provided in subsection J of this section, shall no person, middle person, child, cause or allow a mobile source to operate for more than three consecutive minutes when such mobile source is not in motion, except as follows. When a mobile source is forced to remain motionless because of traffic conditions or mechanical difficulties over which the operator has no control. When it is necessary to operate, crossing, eating, or cooling equipment, I don't continue this. This is not really that relevant.
And it's been three minutes, so if you could wrap up quickly, that would be great. Thank you.
If this application knowingly proposes a plan that would create such a backup of idling cars, the planning and management commission should take into account the CTD regulations. Second, microplastics and contamination of synthetic turf. I just agree that they're doing PFAS free. I don't understand the term no added PFAS, but I, so I'd like an explanation of that. By synthetic turf, it doesn't break down over time with its use, through the weather playing on it. Microplastics are being unleashed into the environment. And as I understand it, hydrodynamic separators, as proposed here, do not remove micro and nanoplastics. One of the companies that the applicant is planning to use or looking into using is Field Turf USA. They've been involved in numerous losses because of big effective fields. So I really think it's worthwhile for the commission to look into deeply what these companies, the manufacturers of plastics are. Are they misleading us or not? Stormwater management, last point, stormwater management plan. Thank you to the commission for your time. The regulations in Connecticut state 100-year management plan for stormwater. That's what this proposal is doing. That's great. But we, last year, we had a 1,000-year storm event, and I really think that the commission should look into what are the realities of Newtown. We don't want to put ourselves in a disaster where we're furthering damage to our environment. Thank you.
You can sign. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the commission. My name is Joseph Marsley. I'm attorney with the law from Kramer Anderson here in Danbury, Connecticut. I know this is a public comment session, but I do have a question for the commission at the outset. There are two items for the commission this evening. One is a supermajority petition that was submitted to the land use agency this week to present to the commission purposes of vote. Sorry, I'm sorry about that. There's a superpetition, supermajority petition that was filed with land use agency to present to the commission as even. It does require a supermajority vote based on signatures obtained by property owners within 500 feet of the subject property who own at least 20% of the land area within 500 feet. So under your zone regulations, there's a requirement that the commission vote and approve if they decide to approve by a supermajority. So I do want to make sure that that petition is acted on this evening by the commission. If you're not planning on continuing to hear it. That's one of the, second item is that there's also intervention petition that was filed with the land use agency for the zoning, planning and zoning commission. That intervention is filed in my office. I have two of my own property owners, Mr. Paul Conover this evening, and also Riverville Hill LLC, which is a company, can I give them a little bit of company that owns this lot of property? So we have two items for the commission for this evening. I don't have a chance to look at those documents, but I would, I know there's only three minutes to speak, but I do want to make sure those items get addressed before the commission grabs its business to tell you. So I defer the commission on how they want to handle those two items. Whether you want to do that now or later, I'll defer to your judgment.
So I have not viewed anything respective of those items.
And just for the record, those items were submitted to the land use agency filed in the record this week. So it hasn't, I was retained recently to represent the proposed interviewers. Be filed as fast as you could with the commission. So if you haven't had a chance to look at the petition that's in there, I'm sure you've dealt with these 2018 cases before. So you know the drill. But we would like at some point a ruling on the petition itself. Since I haven't seen the petition, I'm happy to allow the commission time to review it. I think it's still up within 65 days before we're going to close the public hearing. Because I think this was first presented certainly within 65 days of this application. So we don't even need any consent for extensions if this commission independently decides to continue to hear it. So we can live with the petition and then come back and make a vote on the petition itself.
Just waiting for. So again, I'm looking at this, and it says you intend to file an intervention petition?
You're looking at a supermajority petition, which is a separate item from the 2019 petition which was filed with the land use agency. So it's two separate items, it starts.
No, I'm looking at the letters, reading the letter. What it says.
Yeah, so there were two items. Letter was separate from the intervention petition.
What's the date on that?
On which?
For the letter?
The letter for the supermajority petition was filed with the land use agency yesterday.
Yesterday afternoon?
Yeah, that's correct. Yep.
Okay.
And then the intervention petition was also filed the same day. With this, this coil, the land use agency, as they are called. Okay? Thank you. And again, I know that it's a lot for the commission to absorb at once, but there are two distinct items. So the supermajority petition is an item that is to be dealt with regardless of how you want to vote on the intervention petition. But explicitly under section 11.01.242 of your zone regulations, when there is a petition that meets the requirements of the rights, then it would require a supermajority vote. I can read the language of the kind of things, but you obviously are familiar with the judge regulations, so I won't believe it. regulations, so I won't belabor it.
Yeah, I mean, it is a bit out of order. It would have been nice to have been notified associated with this. I appreciate the fact that you turned it in to the admin at 4:00, it looks like, on the stamp here yesterday. Unfortunately, I did not see it, and this Commission was not aware of it.
Still a timeless mission.
Understood. Understood.
And have a commission sooner. I think we need time to read through this.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Is that the substance of your comments at this point?
For now, yes. I won't belabor the points made in the petition, because the Commission is going to review that and come to a decision on it.
And we're going to need to.
Yeah, finished off. And again, I don't like filing the Logan's hour, just for the record. I have represented applicants and interviewer petitioners in cases across Connecticut. I was retained recently by the proposed interviewers, so I do apologize to the Commission, to the county attorney, to those who know about.
Understood.
But under the time constraints, I was surprised I could get that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Sir?
Okay, yeah, so just so people can hear, the applicant has an opportunity to review and object or respond to this as well. So you will be provided that opportunity. I think we have other members of the public who want to go and speak again. Please be brief.
Back in Pelotown, 13 Mobile Hill Grove Newtown. I am here tonight to protect my family, my neighbors, rise to a reasonable and equitable life, a quality of life. There is none possible under these two soccer field proposals. Many of us have lived here 40 or 50 years, and to be able to have a normal environment while relative pace and quiet.
So just as a point of order here, if there, please just make new points, because these are things that you've heard before, so if there are additional, and those have been taken into the record, we have heard your points, so just new ones.
It's one of the worst possible proposals, but as it stands, to foul the air we breathe with toxic poisoning carbon monoxide fumes. Those fumes will enter our homes and cause major medical illnesses. Based on the developer's own description of traffic queuing up, possibly 40 cars at a time, 12 times a day idling, waiting to enter Mount Pleasant Road, takes at least three minutes, and that's on a good day, for one car. All the while, fumes from the idling vehicles will result. Toxic fumes will certainly enter our homes, foul our air, and cause medical harm to all the neighbors. This cannot be avoided without this, with this setup that is the developers employing. They stated that there would be a lineup of vehicles waiting to get off the premises to enter Mount Pleasant Road, and while the next group of players are trying to enter, is nothing less than a disaster waiting to happen. Again, I will tell you that years ago, one soccer field was turned down due to traffic issues, I believe. That issue has increased threefold. Mount Pleasant Road is rated F. Noise pollution is another issue that may seem trivial to this board. There are noise ordinances in Newtown. The soccer fields near our backyards with spectators in attendance and a public address system will not be able to comply with the ordinance. I believe that they will exceed those parameters. I am eighty-five, and my wife and I would like to have our lives in the normal, live our lives in the normal time. We have left, not short of by outside sources, that could cause a variety of medical issues. Almost done. I would again ask the Commission to review and study the effects of carbon monoxide and incessant noise on a neighborhood. This is our life, and we have certain Newtown wealth. Please reciprocate, and I thank you. One question I do have, which I sent an email to you, was asking if there was going to be a public address system by this developer.
Thank you for your comments, and we will convey that question to the developer. Any other comments from the public? Just to the developer, I think the question on the PA system is a good one, and I'd like to understand that.
Okay, for the record, Chris Plasky, civil and hears and half the applicant. Sorry. For starters, I'm not a lawyer, but I do believe that there needs to be reason for filing an intervention. This application has already started a public hearing, it seemed extremely last hour, and also for the supermajority vote, again, it's extremely last hour, we don't believe there's any reason for it here. We believe it's up to the Commission's discretion whether to accept that intervention or not. I'd ask that they confer with town council regarding that. Again, we don't agree there's any reason for an intervention in this application, but it's not ultimately. Our decision is up to the Commission. In terms of the PA system, there will be a speaker system for the stadium, if you will, in terms of a public announcement system that will be a part. There is a scoreboard that's located. There's a scoreboard that's located here for this upper field, so that it gets a good show where the score would be for the game, if you will, and how the speakers would be as part of that scoreboard. But there's nothing that's going to be, you know, way high up in the air, giant glaring speakers or anything to that manner.
And they will be fixing away from...
That's correct. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you. You've already spoken. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Commissioners? Given the nature of this, what I would like to do, if the Commission still apply, I'd like some time. We need to review, you know, what's been submitted here in order to make a decision on that. We obviously can't do that right now, so what I would like to do is to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
Just one point on that, sorry. Rob, did we have to grant an extension?
Oh, okay.
So that was another point, that was me. We have to grant an extension. Sort of, if I may ask, if we do not grant the extension, then they do have to close the public hearing tonight?
We can close the public hearing. Yeah.
So just reading this quickly, and I haven't seen the report either, but it says that they want to provide testimony and evidence from Seaton Trinket, and I don't see him here, was, he could have testified today, and would have justified without a intervention. So, but we need some time to review this, but doesn't necessarily mean that you need to have them. They need to get that opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Okay, we can close the public hearing, can't we?
You can, but I think the safer course, you have a motion for intervention, you're not looking to create any appellate issues with regard to the motion for intervention with regard to a petition, the petition is valid, would require you to vote by a supermajority for unapproval. So, you know, those are two considerations that you have to make before you decide. And obviously, if he's not going to grant you the extension, then you would close the public hearing, that's that, but he's definitely having an appellate issue as to whether or not you'd vote on the motion for intervention and the petition requiring majority approval. So that's just conservatively reluctant.
So to the applicant, apologies for this. We refer this call, pardon if you were so...
No, it's all right, thank you. So if the Commission is prepared tonight to vote on the majority petition, the supermajority petition and the intervention petition, then we ask that you close the public hearing. If the Commission is not prepared to do that, just to avoid a potential legal situation, we will grant the extension to the next meeting. The points made by town council are appropriate, though if Mr. Trinket is intended to submit public hearing, there has been two public hearings in the few so much he has not had. Just want to put that out of the library, and that is our statement. So again, if you are prepared to vote on the supermajority and the intervention petition, which is in your rights, they did submit, you can look at it and do so, then we would ask you to close the public hearing. If you're not prepared to do those two things to avoid a legal issue, we will grant, on the record, will grant the 35-day extension. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a reasonable approach, we understand. So I put it to the...
So the standard for intervention petition is quite low, you know, the move to intervene, if you granted the petition to intervene, then you'd even have the opportunity to put on whatever evidence he has right now. And the, usually, supermajority petition, you would be counting up, you know, doing the area of the, around the property, and calculating to make sure that it was accurate, and that it was 20% of. If you granted the petition, you granted the motion to intervene, you have the opportunity to put on some evidence, then you could close the public hearing, and you would be a supermajority yes vote in order for that to get an approval. That's another option. Otherwise, you go to the, I mean, you want to review the information, then you need to go to the next meeting.
Okay, Rob. Yeah, I think we got it. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, so our choice is this, we could grant the petition and the supermajority petition as well as the interviewer now. Correct. Or, but this is without reviewing what's been put to us, and I'm not coming with that. So I want to review it, I want us all to review it, and therefore, my suggestion would be that we, you know, that I continue.
If that's the case, we are willing to grant the 35-day extension.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to entertain a motion to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing until December 4th in the Council of Chambers on the other side of the street. Application 25.25?
Do we have a second? All those in favor of continuing? Say hi. Most? Okay, we'll continue the hearing. And again, you know, this is the second time tonight, I am not happy about the timing of this, and I'm sure the applicant is not happy either. You know, this puts us in a difficult position once again. So, you know, just for future reference, I want these things to be timely. We need to function as a Commission, we need to render decisions. It's not in the public interest to be continuing meetings all the time, nor is it the applicant. So I'd like a better effort to do so, and I'll just state that for the record. Again, apologies to the applicant. So with that, let's move along with the agenda.
Excuse me, Mr.? In anticipation of the motion for intervention, you need to be prepared to go forward with whatever evidence you have, the petition of course is available.
Really appreciate it. Okay, so moving along back on the agenda here, the record report. Okay, good. And approval of minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I moved that minutes, October 16th, they approved as written, reviewed those, obviously, no issues there.
Okay, we have Mark seconding all those in favor of approval of minutes. I hope I say hi. Hi. And now I'd like to entertain the happy motion to adjourn.
So, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor of adjourn? Hi. Thank you for that, members of the public, who voted all out here.
And I'd like to compliment Nicole, who gets the minutes this time.
Shannon. No, Nicole, the last one, Shannon, you're going now.
Okay, all right. I'd like to compliment Nicole.